Gary, would you lead us in prayer?
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day and that we can meet together here. This institution of knowledge that we can make decisions that further this college. We're thankful for opportunities that you provided for us. We're just thankful for the blessings that you poured upon each of us in this college as well. These things we pray in Christ's name.
Thanks, Gary. This is, I have everyone off originally first quarter giving this a kiln.
It is, yeah, I, there's some re-class.
All right, first order of business is to discuss the Kilman property bids and its recommendation. You all were sent copies of these bids. We had multiple offers come in. With the highest one being a million fifty. Was wanting to see if anyone had any questions over any of these bids.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to accept the bids per the bidding's recommendation to sell to Randall Noe, a million fifty thousand.
We hear a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, same side, motion carries. We, you were also sent information about a phone, the phone system that we're trying to upgrade. And do we like to have some discussion about this or?
Yes, sir, yeah, thank you for your time this morning. We have been looking or at what we're going to do with our phone system long term. Our current system as it stands today is already in the line. We can update it one more time when we think that's going to run out in probably about two years as far as I expect. Take because we don't have actual days from Cisco yet. But we know we're going to have to make a transition to new phones sometime in the near future. So with our recent acquisition and use of our Microsoft three sixty five. We've just, we, we've identified an opportunity to move our existing phone capabilities into the Microsoft stack. Over the, over a period of time, allowing us to save money and integrating our phone system into a feature set that that name our faculty and staff are using or beginning to use today. So the proposal here is, is for us to, to make that migration. The, the one item that we need to address, which is in the proposal section is you look at the top, you see kind of what our current solution set looks like for our own system. And, you know, currently we're, it's costing us about eighty two thousand dollars per year and the cost will go up about five percent per year. And you can see those costs at the top of that proposal. The upgrade system ultimately saves the, the college money. The reason for the higher cost for this, for this proposal is because we will have to replace all of the desktop handsets. None of those can be used in this migration to Microsoft Teams. And in fact, if we, if we don't do this now, we decide to go with a different phone system in the future. These handsets won't work there either. We are going to have to replace all of our desktop handsets. We know that. Because of the age of them and the supportability of what they call the firmware, which is kind of the internal code for each one of those desktop handsets. There's not compatible anymore. We are going to have to replace all of that hardware. And that's probably our biggest cost going forward. If it wasn't for the desktop handsets, we could see an immediate return on, on the migration to the Microsoft or our phone system. And you can see here in the middle of that, of that option to kind of what those costs will look like for us to upgrade the phone system. It's that initial one hundred thirty six thousand that's mostly tied up into the desktop handsets. And then every year after that, our cost range somewhere in the fifty thousand dollar range for support services for that system as, as we have identified today. Much of the cost for that hundred thirty six thousand is down at the bottom of that page. And these are items that Lonnie has been able to move to other services already. And so you look at things here at the bottom, the cost that we had budgeted for paying for hotspots around campus, those costs have been transferred to almost all the departments. And so it's budget allocation that we will not use to pay for a sauce boss that we can apply toward this project. We have moved the, the P WEC off of a dedicated internet connection to our, what we call an SD WAN, which is how all the campuses talk to each other. And that's saving us thirteen thousand dollars out of our budget as well. And you can see each one of these down here, the, I think it's, it's worth noting that the forty eight thousand that we had budgeted for the phone system was money that we had set aside knowing that we were probably going to need, need to go to a new phone system sometime. So we actually had that in this year's budget and we had not used that forty eight thousand dollars. So that could also be applied to this migration. And you see some other costs there. We, we have eliminated all analog lines. The last analog lines we had were for our fire systems. Those are all based on cellular tower traffic. Now we don't use lines for those anymore. So we've got some cash there. So all in all, we've got the money set aside in our existing budget to cover the cost of that hundred thirty six thousand dollars that we've, where we've trained, where we eliminated services we no longer need. The budget's still there. We can take that budget, we can fight this and get us through this initial cost for this project. Does that make sense? And that clear? I know that's kind of, that's a lot of, lot of moving parts there. Any questions about that piece of it? So the, so the, so the last page here is basically what that, what those costs will look like over five years. To, to, to the best of our ability. So you see the top line is if we just continue with what we have or something similar, that's what those costs are going to look like over the next five years. And one thing we need to reflect on is if we were just to maintain a on-premise phone system like one we have now with Cisco, when we purchased that in, in twenty thirteen, that cost us four hundred and forty thousand dollars to do that. That was for all the hardware and the server room, all the devices, all the lines, all that kind of stuff. So it's a pretty significant uplift to just make that transition to another on-prem. I don't think it'd be four and forty thousand dollars again, but what that points is, is probably going to be a very significant cost to do that. So, so if, so somewhere out here, probably around a year, three or year four, those costs are not going to be correct. So we know there's going to be a major uplift to get to that new phone system. But with all the cloud technology and all the stuff that have been available to us today, we think this is a good time to transition our phones to a, a cloud option. And then proposal for is that second line there, which again, there's that, there's that initial outlay of a hundred thirty six thousand we have to have for this year to do this right now. We've identified those funds. And then generally our costs are going to be in the upper fifties to lower sixties per year. Just to make sure you understand, do one more thing is Lonnie has continued to kind of work on this. And we have identified a lower price point for the desktop handsets. We just, we just received those proposals, I think it's Friday. So we think we're going to be able to lower the cost of the handsets significantly by about twenty thousand dollars. And then we are also looking at two proposals now that don't include what they call a managed services component. So in other words, we would kind of continue to run the system ourselves. We wouldn't rely, we, we, we wouldn't rely on a third party to keep the system running for us. And that would also lower our costs significantly. We don't have real good numbers on that quite yet. We know the phone devices. We, we've got a good idea of what the phones are going to cost us, but we're still working on the managed services component. But I think what, what I feel confident to say is that no matter where we land here, it's going to be lower than the cost you see here on this sheet. And so my, my best guesstimates at this point is that over this same five-year period, instead of saving the seventy, seventy three thousand dollars we have here, it's probably going to be more around ninety two or ninety three thousand dollars during that same period. So it's all kind of, we're, we're still kind of working on this and we'd like to get it done this year because we have these funds available in our current fiscal year to cover that hundred thirty six thousand dollars or thereabout. To get this thing moving forward. So we really want to kind of bring this to you now, see if we can get this, it's approved and move this forward. And, but what I think is that our overall cost will be lower than what we're seeing on the sheets today. So at that point, I will, that for questions.
David, the, the five-year period, is that a fixed cost? Is that contractually committed?
It's not. It's, it's, it's our, it's our estimates based on a five percent increase in cost per year. And, and it's, and, and so the, the cost here in year one, eighty two, seven hundred is a fixed cost. We know what that's going to cost us.
So it's fixed for one year?
Yes, sir.
And subject to escalating?
Escalate cost after that, yes, sir.
But not necessarily five percent?
That's correct.
But you built in five percent?
Yes, sir.
Um, next question would be, and I find, I think my last one, because you know, this is your area and I'm, I'm already past my, my level. A good while back. If you determine the need to exit, you know, some of these things that are, gets connected so that however unhappy you might later become, you, you can't go away because you basically have to destroy and start over. How do you feel about that? How married to them are you at the end of five years if you want? I guess it would be at the end of any year.
If, if.
If you're only committed a year at a time.
Yeah, so the move to Microsoft is tied into our existing agreement, which the last time we signed that agreement was in twenty twenty-two years for a three-year commitment. And so from a phone perspective, we're not tied to that, but we are tied to that from the perspective of our email and those kinds of core functionalities that this system provides. Bringing the phones into that same environment just allows us to provide for all the, the people that work here at TVCC, a common interface that they're already beginning to use in Teams. And we're just bringing in the phone systems. So it's a lot like your Zoom experience here, right? So we end up having a, 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 a window in a browser that somebody uses to connect myself and you or, or Mike or whatever, we're having this conversation. But now within Teams environment, now I get to not only just talk to you, I can see on the screen, I can share files, we can edit files together, right? So now it becomes this really rich collaborative experience that everyone gets to start having. And so we can, so, so since we have this three-year agreement with Microsoft, to get more back to your question, now we can start plugging in where we think it's appropriate. And where it's not appropriate, we just don't plug in. So the question will be, so your question is, so we, we go ahead and we decide to do this with the phones. Let's say next year we decide, boy, that was just the first decision, other, we don't like that. We can always back away from that phone decision and we can go a different direction. The direction could be, we bring it all back in house like we, what we're doing today. We buy a lot of very expensive Cisco equipment and we redeploy and we just do that. The risk we run there, David, is that we get to that point, all said, all those phones you bought are compatible anymore. So now we got to redebought and we have to rebuy all those devices. That's probably our, our biggest risk in this, in this scenario. And so, and, and so we're, we're not tied to this phone system because we have an agreement that says we have to stay with this phone system. We're tied to Microsoft three sixty-five for at least two more years. The phone system, we can plug or unplug as we see fit. We can unplug or plug other things as well, but we will never get away from that Microsoft agreement until we get at least past two more years. The reality is, I don't see us getting away from that at all. We have to have email. We have to have some sort of collaboration space. And so we're, we're either going to do Microsoft or we're going to do Google. That's probably about the only two options that are viable for, for institution of higher education. Microsoft just brings a very rich set of features that, that, of features to our world that plugs directly into the operating system that's said by. So that's the reason we like that system.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, do your motion to approve.
I'll make that note. I'll say.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next item on business is consider to discuss emergency replacement of boilers in Cardinal Hall. Dr. Morrison, would you give us a little report on what's been going on with this and what, what, what we're?
Yes, sir. We currently have two boilers operating in the hall. One has been down about the last three years from my understanding. And the second one has been went down a couple of weeks ago. We got it fired back up. But it's unreliable. And we're about, you know, by the end of the summer, we'll have our students moving back in and we have to have a reliable water source. Now, there is also some concerns and Tony's on the Zoom. He can also answer them.
He's headed here.
He's headed here.
Yes.
Concerns about bacteria building up in the tanks and because it's not functioning. This is something that, you know, our students have to have hot water. And what we're asking today, using the emergency clause, if determined by the board, they see fit to take quotes on replacing the two boiler systems in order to be ready for the fall semester. The current boiler systems were, when they were installed about twelve years ago, I believe, that company is no longer in business. So there's no parts available for those boilers. So it's leading us to a complete replacement of those boiler, two boilers. And I, this is something Tony, David, and I've been working over the last couple of weeks to come up with the best solution, best recommendation to the board. So what we're asking board is to use some of the money and the contingency with a little bit of buffer. Hoping to, in case nothing comes up while they're in there replacing the boilers, but you know, with anything, there's always a risk of something else coming up. The engineer has estimated around a hundred fifty five thousand dollars to replace both boilers and a pump. And so we're just wanting to get the board approval to move forward because it's been a four to six week lead time in getting the equipment in and probably another two to three weeks for installation. Well, we're now in August when this, and students will be moving in, you know, mid-August, so. Questions for David or myself?
I just, we were visiting about this, that this is considered an emergency situation is what we've been told, which it sounds like one. The only concern that I had this morning when we were just discussing this is that I know we have certain bid processes we have to go through. As I understand, Lee's been consulted in there is quote, it's kind of a broad brush thing. It is an emergency situation. It's up to the board to determine that situation. This, it appears to be a health and safety factor because of the possible contamination of water in the, in the, in the boiler itself. And also we certainly need to have it from a functional standpoint because if you don't have hot water, you've got two hundred something students that are going to be in there come the first week of August, second week of August. So, you know, I just want to make sure we're on solid ground on declaring an emergency. I know David Hopkins had researched this a little bit and spoke with Lee about it. But I just think that's something we need to be aware of. If this is an emergency, I don't know what would be though. This is pretty important to the function of that building. David, do you have anything to say?
Well, let me just, Steve, just, so just so that everybody knows, under the, what the law says, the board determines that the lay posed by procurement methods under Texas Education Code forty-four oh thirty-one, that's putting in the newspaper, sealed bids, all, all those methodologies would prevent or substantially impair the conducted classes or other essential school activities, then contracts for the replacement or repair of the equipment or facility may be made by other methods. Of course, the other methods we will, through email or other methods, we will determine quotes. We're not just going to say we pick you, but we're, we're avoiding, you know, thirty days to put it in the newspaper and then four weeks of delivery time. We're just trying to get going. That's straight out of the law. That's not coming from me. So that's what we were just talking about is the board determines that apparent. In my opinion, it's an apparent.
And, and you might have said this, Jason, but they, they did say if we elect to go with this option, there's going to be four to six weeks delivery time on these things, which really puts us kind of getting pretty close to, we need to have them up and running.
And Tony's had a mechanical engineer looking at this and he's just, we're not going at this blind. So people are going to have to bid on something and he's working with an engineer.
Tony, do you have any thoughts or?
No, sir, that is it. We had a mechanical engineer on board looking at it, helping us with the design and the scope of work. This is their recommended policy, our direct recommended procedure that we go about. So I spoke with David about having it deemed an emergency and he said, well, we need to get that board approval and, but we have had multiple vendors already come in and look at the work. So as soon as we get the clearance to do so, we'll start collecting bids and try to get this moving along ASAP.
Is there anything in the bids that will allow for the, since we've had stagnant water sitting there in various lines for some time with one of these boilers? Is there any bids associated with what we're getting to flush out the lines or how do we make?
Yes, sir. That is part of the scope of work. And there might be a chance, just in case, to kind of put it out there. There is a four hundred gallon holding tank on the first floor. There might be need to, at some time in the future, replace that, which would be an additional expense. Or as you said, sir, in the flushing out process, if we determine that it's not structural, you know, then that would be an additional cost. But we do believe at this time, a cleaning out and flushing of that is, is adequate unless we find additional problems.
And there'll be some testing of water that goes along with this?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The water temperatures, anything over equals a hundred thirty-one degrees is, is what we need. We need to be able to maintain a hundred thirty-one. I believe it's a minimum that we have to be able to hold in that holding tank. Anything above that, we're golden. It takes care of all these issues.
David, do you have anything?
I understand circumstances, agree, but the, the course of action and the urgency. Now, if I'm hearing you correctly, David, I think you identified the board can deem an emergency according to the judge.
Right, you know, based on those.
Sure. Question then runs to somewhere in the statute, I think, I recall, that there is a process for emergency action. I'm just asking, are we satisfied that what we're doing here today, sitting down, having it put, of course, meets that requirement? In other words, you can call an emergency meeting, obviously. But, but there are requirements to be met and I'm not trying to, to, to pick around the edges at it, but just be sure that, that we're, we're taking those steps. Are you satisfied that, yes, the board can say this is emergency? I agree, there's, could be a health issue. But as far as the steps to be taken, I'm not hearing clearly whether we, we have that in front of us. Does anyone know?
Well, the, the law that I just read that says other methods. The law talks about several different methods and they, they've got all kinds of exceptions. Whether you're hiring technical consultants, like somebody from Dave's area, it just says negotiate the best value for the whatever. But I will, I will clarify with Lee, if there is a codicil I'm not aware of, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I speak in order that the government code from Department of Health and Safety Department, which I think is where you left at that.
But yeah, this, this is the education code, which is what addresses this process for us. You know, the city, it was different. And it was local government code, the education code was here. But I will certainly verify that. This just says other methods. And the ones I quoted is some of the other methods depending on what you're doing. This just, normally you would do sealed bids.
I, I, I get it on that. And again, not, I'm well aware that there are extreme shortcut measures. But those shortcut measures require that a specific process be followed. And I'm just wanting to validate that we know what that process is and that that's exactly what we're doing in the action here to do that.
Well, if there's something I missed, I'll, I'll verify with Lee. Okay, when we start taking bids, I don't think there is, but I will verify that. It's a good thought, yeah.
Could we make a, I mean, should it be the pleasure of the board to go forward with this as presented? Could we make it subject to getting a final approval of Lee with your consultation?
Sure.
You know, if, if, if this meeting has been called to address this issue on a short-term basis, I would be satisfied. But since it just appeared and happened to align with this meeting, I have some concern if we are in fact still covered under that, that emergency provision. I don't know the absolute answer. And, and I'm just wanting to be sure that, that we have that answer before we, we move ahead. Can you accept a motion to approve the action subject to legal review?
I, I think that's what we need to do, in my opinion. Do I hear a second to that motion? No, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All, all opposed, black sign, motion carried. Next, we're getting ready to convene an executive session, but before we go, I, I just realized that when we made the motion to approve the Kilman property, we didn't state the name of the parties involved and, and document the contract we took. Now, our committee has made that recommendation with the, the no contract on that. But I was wondering if we should amend that motion either now or when we come out of that, just to reflect the name of the contract that we've accepted and make it of, of the record.
I thought, I thought she did.
Did they say Randall Noe? Okay, sorry, I didn't hear. Oh, okay, okay, very good. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure. All right. So at this time, we'll convene an executive session to pursue it to get the government code fifty-five, one dash oh seven two of the Texas Opening Act.
We need a motion.
Do your motion, aye, here. All in favor?
Do you want me to stay in the executive session? Many David as well.
Is David going to stay?
Hey, who made the motion to return and what time?
My, made it, yeah, in your second.
I think it was actually David.
They, oh, David made it. It was one ten.
Okay. All right.
All right. Next item of business is reconvene to take any necessary actions regarding real property. Since we don't have any now, I propose we.
No action?
No action.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
And we done all we neighbor did on the Kilman problem.
As long as we have the name on there.
What's good?
Ron is, uh, trusty Dave has made a motion to adjourn. Do your second. All in favor?
Have a good weekend, sweet.
Have a good weekend, sweet.